Time being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great crowd tonight. So just want to make a couple of quick announcements. This meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the district website. And they're running some Alice drills in the adult ed portion of the building tonight. So if you hear any announcements about active shooters, it's a drill. And without further ado, I will move to the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the November 8th, 2022 meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you hold the committee, please?
Number one, Mopla?
Yes.
Number two, Rada?
Yes.
Number three, Light?
Yes.
Number four, Moa?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our update from our student representative. Good evening, Vicki.
Hi. So last week at school was parent-teacher conferences that took place Wednesday afternoon for the half-day and then Thursday night. And then student leaders took this opportunity to get some service hours that are needed for either senior hours, NHS, or the Nichols Honors Academy. And our Thanksgiving pep rally is taking place tomorrow at the last two periods of the day. And Spirit Week has been active from last Thursday until tomorrow. And the Spirit Week is run by the cheerleading team, and the day consists of Decades Day, Flannel Day, Monday Like Night Lights, which is where you wore a football jersey to school, Superhero Day, and then tomorrow is Green and White Day for pep rally. And last Thursday, there was actually a winter sports sign-up meeting where you signed up and the athletes got a chance to meet and talk with the coaches. And winter sports are going to start trials and practices the Monday after Thanksgiving break. And then for the last sports event is on Thanksgiving morning, where the football team is going to Southbridge for their annual football game.
Excellent. Thank you for your updates.
Thank you.
Can I ask more questions about the pep rally?
Yes.
What time and do you know?
So tomorrow, we have the first two periods of the day, and then at 9:09 is when second period ends, we'll be called down to the auditorium, and then it will go until the end of the day. And we have various activities such as tug-of-war, pom-pom, like pom-poms in the middle, and then you have to race to get the pom-poms, and some other fun things that the cheerleaders have planned.
Excellent. Sounds like fun.
I think it's going to be very fun.
Good deal. Any other questions for Vicki? No? Hearing none. Thanks for your updates. Do you have class tonight?
Yes, I do.
Well, feel free to skedaddle if you need to.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thanks.
Thank you.
We're actually going to take things a little bit out of order tonight, out of respect for the many guests that we have here tonight. So the next item on the agenda, we're actually going to move to old business and talk about the PBIS school-based team presentations. Sounds like the first team that's going to be presenting is Park Ave. Good evening, Ms. Poliafico.
Good morning, evening. I'll be presenting, and I'd also like to introduce Kathy Nikosi, a special education teacher at Park Ave and part of our PBIS team. I don't know if you had a chance to review Eric Mackey's presentation from the May Institute, but I do reference that a few times in this presentation as well. He worked with the school before I came on, but did have some data and recommendations for the district that I've incorporated a little bit into this presentation. So we're going to be looking at where we were, where we are, and where we're going with our PBIS work at the elementary school.
So where we were, we have and had behavioral expectations set and posted throughout the school, for the most part, within the classrooms. And those big three ideas are to be safe, be respectful, and to be responsible. We also have ongoing positive celebrations with our kids of character and our student of the month. The kids of character all surround a character trait, maybe it's honesty, maybe it's integrity, which I think is the same thing. I can't remember what some of the-
Gratitude is this month.
Gratitude, and that kind of thing.
So this came from the report from Eric Mackey. So this was where in 2017, 18, Park Ave was, pre-pandemic, at about 66% tier-one fidelity. So that tier-one talks about your general, school-wide work that you're doing. So not really getting into tier-two and tier-three, where you're starting to identify groups or students that need extra attention or support. So tier-one is really the general, school-wide expectations. So we're at about 66% fidelity in 1718. And 2122, so coming back from the pandemic, you see, went to 23%. So in terms of meeting all of those bullet items. So this is kind of where we started from this year, trying to build back our PBIS work at the elementary school.
So where are we now? We've established a strong PBIS team within Park Avenue. We have 17 members from general education, special education, ABA support, IAs, gen-ed teachers, your school adjustment counselors, and administration. So it's really a whole group effort, a whole school-wide effort. We've completed a tier-one inventory, so going back to what Mrs. Poliafico was just talking about. And we rated ourselves between a zero and a one on how we were doing with those pieces. We have reworked all of the behavioral expectations. We've changed -- they were very, very wordy, and we changed them to be more concise, more kid-friendly, easier to read, easier to implement, we think. And we are planning on bringing that to fruition. We have training on it this -- next weekend? Next Friday?
Yeah.
Next Friday. And then when we come back from break, we're going to implement it school-wide. We are also still continuing to celebrate positive things with celebrations within the school with kids of character and the student of the month celebrations, generally held at grade-level assemblies. And we are in the process of establishing a school-wide positive reinforcement system, so that any adult, anywhere within the building, when you see something good, you can immediately provide some reinforcement for that student and the other kiddos that are watching that, so that they'll know -- they'll have some buy-in. And they'll know what they're doing and what they should be doing.
So our next areas of focus for the school -- oh, thank you. Our next areas of focus will be, as Kathy mentioned, in our next PD day, developing a school-wide understanding of the expectations, defining those. We're a large school of 122 staff, so that consistency is really important throughout the school, as well as making sure that we're adjusting for developmental levels of pre-K all the way up to grade four. So making sure we're helping the adults understand them, so we can help the students understand, as well as levels of behavior, what things fall into which levels of severity, and classroom interventions. We are also building our data collection system using Educator's Handbook, which you have heard about a few times at these meetings. So using that to be able to identify the where, the when, the who's of some of the behaviors we're seeing, as well as utilizing that for positive identifications. It also has a merit piece where teachers can put in positive behaviors that they're seeing. And building a multi-tiered system of support. So when students are finding difficulty meeting the expectations and our typical systems are not working for them, what are our next levels of intervention for those students, and who is implementing them? And finally, these are some recommendations that came out of Eric Mackey's report, encouraging consistent participation. So this is done. We have a lot of participation. We have talked about building it out to include community members and families. But I think we had some pre-work to do before we were there. But all three admin are present at the meetings. So one of the recommendations was to have administration present. Also talked about staff interviews and embedding PBIS questions. We already do this with a lot of situational-type questions to assess as we're hiring for staff who are proactive in terms of identifying root causes of behaviors, as opposed to just consequencing behavior. Providing time on the PD calendar. So this is planned. We've already done some faculty meetings or some PD around de-escalation techniques done by our school adjustment counselors. We're going to be doing some work around Educator's Handbook and future meetings on defining expectations and school-wide incentives. And another recommendation he had made is to identify a consistent data system that can be used to organize our behavioral information, and that is Educator's Handbook. And we still are working as a school to become thoroughly familiar with that and be able to utilize it to its fullest potential. But that is something we're building together as we build consensus for the best way to use that as a school. So that is our current standing of PBIS.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
I would just like to add that, just to give some context to this, the needs assessment was done, and N is in your school committee packet. The work that we will be doing this year will continue with outside supports. We went out for an RFP. We will be continuing to work with the May Institute in terms of supporting each of the PBIS teams at the schools and really expanding the PBIS teams and the family outreach. So things are going to evolve in a consistent and cohesive way at each school, a little differently, but with the support of an outside consultant. So.
That's great to hear. So can you tell us a little bit more about the school-wide positive reinforcement program? Is this like a return of pause? I know the middle school's doing Wildcat tickets.
A little bit, but it's going to -- I don't want to talk too much about it, because we haven't had a chance as a whole staff to talk about it. The PBIS team has generated some ideas. But we're looking at something that will build upon a lot of what the teachers are already using in their classrooms, so that we're not adding additional work of management onto the classroom teachers. So our focus has really been doing something where both whole class, whole grade level, and individual students can gain recognition for meeting the expectations in positive ways, both in the classroom and in the general areas of the school.
That's great. Good to hear. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Great work. Very exciting to see this happening. Can't wait to have more updates. It looks like next, if there's no other questions or comments about Park Ave's presentation, we can move on to Webster Middle School? Thank you.
So we're part of the PBIS team at the middle school. I'm Megan Lazaraski. I am the coach for the building. And this is Lisa Leard, a fifth-grade teacher, and Kelsey Upstrom, a sixth-grade teacher. We have several other teachers and a paraprofessional, as well as our dean of students on our team.
Boy, you gave me a mic. Okay. All right. So first of all, a quick reminder on what is PBIS. In general, that's a question that we field a lot, especially with staff and with kids, because it's really important when you use acronyms to make sure that everybody knows what it means. So we're really clear with the kids that PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Systems. It is supports that are built in for our kiddos. I don't know who has that. Thank you. And it really takes a look at breaking down behavior, because all behavior we know starts with an antecedent, starts with a reason why, something that's done or said. And then there's a behavior, and then there's a consequence. And that's kind of like the old way of thinking about it. PBS turns that around, and we take a look at antecedents, and we take them as opportunities for preventative measures. And then we also go from there to taking it for opportunities to teach students. And then when we have to, we go back and we reteach, or we take other measures forward as needed. In general, it's an organized approach for improving classroom and school climate on a whole, decreasing reactive, and instead maximizing that academic achievement, spending less time in the moment reacting, and doing more front-loading with our kiddos. Also, it's improving support for all students, no matter what level or tier they might fall under, along with integrating academic and behavioral incentives. That's really important at our level here. In general, it has a ton of benefits school-wide. Here's just a few of them. And we've been really lucky to see a lot of these come to fruition already in the past year and a half that we've been transforming our PBIS system at WMS. So here's our acronym. We are using ROR, and that stands for Responsibility, Ownership, Attitude, and Respect. And our kiddos know this backwards and forwards. We not only drill them on it, but try to make it fun. We dedicate the first two weeks of school year to making sure that we are teaching students what it looks like across all areas, all spaces in our school, what it looks like, what it sounds like, what it means to exhibit ROR. There are posters of this in every environment, including the cafeteria, the bathrooms, the hallway, classrooms, so that they're tailored to specifically show what ROR would look like.
And this -- sorry. This is the one you were just looking at is kind of the overall school-wide ROR expectations. Just in general, this is how you are a good citizen at Webster Middle School.
PBIS really depends on consistency, and it depends on consistency across the board with all staff members, anyone who sets foot in our school, along with all of our kiddos working together as one team. We see something, we say something, all kids are our kids, all staff members are a team. And because of that, that's where our training kind of goes in play, and we've been working really hard at that this year. So taking a look at PBIS implementation, it's really five major steps. And the first is to create that team to lead PBIS across our school, and to identify and teach those school-wide expectations, and developing consistent teacher responses. We kind of gave ourselves three checks on that already. That's what we really worked hard at last year. This year, we are at steps four and five of developing a system to discourage the behaviors that are not wanted, but also to continue to encourage the ones that we do see, that we'd like to continue to see, and also to have a system to evaluate ourselves as a team, ourselves as a school, and each So one of the big things that goes hand-in-hand with PBS, just by nature, a lot of times, especially at the middle school and high school level, you think of positive behavior, and sometimes you kind of get the misnomer that it's all fluff, that it's all just being happy-go-lucky. And we know that's not how behavior works, right? You have good days and bad days. And just like with any balance beam, you need to have both sides. You need to have and be prepared for the behaviors that are not so wanted, along with being able to have a really strong support to continue to encourage and praise the kiddos that are making those good choices, along with reteaching moments. So this is our referral form chart that was given to all staff members. That was led by our dean of students, Ms. Bergeron, so that all teachers at the beginning of the year before kids came in had very, very clear steps to follow. If this, then this. That was really important feedback that we got from staff members, that they were wanting that. Like, we say we're one team, this is a way that it brings everyone together, all on the same page. We did a lot of summer PD work around this, making sure that we were prepared for staff members, so that we knew that everyone was ready to welcome all of our kiddos back in the building. One thing that we included in our staff binder was our huge sense of belonging. That's our strategic plan for the district this year. And it really went very nicely with our PBIS next steps. Anyway, so thanks for that. And we are trying really hard to strive for that sense of belonging, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that as we go into what our next steps have been lately and where we're headed. So it's always great to start with a goal in mind. So our goal for our staff this year was six really clear steps. We wanted to make sure that 100% of staff knew what PBIS was and why we use it. It was really important, as we welcomed a lot of new staff members this year. It was also really important that across all of our classrooms, that you could see and hear and feel positive behavior techniques being consistently used. We also really strive to have 100% of teachers and staff, all staff, from bus stop monitors to cafeteria workers to office, everyone giving out those ROR tickets. Also, we wanted 100% of our students and faculty to be really clear on expectations and those consequences if they're not followed. And last but not least, we wanted to make sure that 100% of our staff had read our binder and knew with fidelity what we were asking as a school and as a school climate. On the flip side of that, of course, we also had goals for our students. We really wanted to make sure that 100% of our students knew what ROR was and what the expectations were. We wanted to make sure that 100% of our students also received consistent feedback. Like, if you remember a slide previously, PBIS depends on consistency. It does not work if it's not done with fidelity and consistency. So we wanted to make sure that that was definitely a driving factor for us. We also wanted to make sure that every single kiddo received ROR tickets, and that 100% of our classrooms and spaces embodied the ROR atmosphere, that students are clear on expectations and consequences, and that 100% of our students feel a sense of love and belonging. And that 100% of our students also are able to give us feedback, really tying that back, giving students a chance to have that voice, especially at the middle school level. They're really trying to learn how to be assertive in positive ways, and giving them those opportunities, are teaching them how to voice their feelings and opinions respectfully, and to have that chance to do it.
So this is Ms. Lazar's baby here.
So the students can receive a ROR ticket, which you see on the left-hand side, for exhibiting one of the traits. And they can hold on to them, and they can cash them in in a couple of different ways. One of the main ways is we have a ROR store. So there's all sorts of items in there, from spiritware to bouncy balls to glue sticks, you name it. We just bought some new things. We got gibbets that go in your Crocs, and all sorts of fun little fidgets and stuff. And then we also, once a quarter, do some -- we've done some in-school last year, but we did one already this year, an after-school event, where the kids could come. It was five ROR tickets to get in, and they were able to be in the cafeteria with stacks of music, in the library where they could play games, and there was a movie playing, and then in the gym, where they chose to play dodgeball. Once they spend the tickets, they are going into a grade-level vase in the main lobby. It goes five, six, seven, eight, left to right. And once they fill up to the line in the center, they get a grade-level prize. This time, the grade-level prize was extra recess. And once they fill it to the top, they get another grade-level prize, which is yet to be determined. We actually want to survey the students. We're going to give a choice and let them vote. But nobody's there yet, so we haven't had to tackle that Some changes we made from last year. We have grade levels, have a monthly community meeting, where we do school-wide announcements and reminders. We do fun little minute-to-win-it games, little friendly competitions. There's always a monthly focus. Like, we did gratitude in November, and in December, we're doing something you're thankful for. For gratitude, we had students draw pictures or write down what they were grateful for, and we made a slideshow, and we had it playing in the background during community meeting. We have quarterly after-school events. The next one we're looking to do is actually a dodgeball tournament. Have it be --
Teachers, yeah.
Teachers, yeah. Use it as a little bit of a fundraising opportunity for the school store, as well as an event for the kids to get together and have that sense of belonging. We get student input often. They all have a grade-level Google Classroom, where I send them out updates and information, try and pump them up for the school store, the event, things like that. And we've also sent out surveys to them, little interviews. We have a little bit of the survey data that we want to share with you, that we thought was important on sense of belonging.
So we gave out a school survey that asked a bunch of various questions in different forms, really trying to drive home an idea of a sense of belonging and kind of see where our kiddos fall. And so we pulled out a couple that we felt were really resonated, telling with us. So the first one is, I have at least one teacher, either from this year or past years at WMS, who I know I can go to. So out of 410 responses, we had 81% say yes, and 19% say no. Now, of course, that 19% is the one that we worry about, so we dove a little bit further into that data. Turns out that 76% -- or 76 students total made up that 19%. Of those 76 students, we found out that 39 of them are brand-new to our school this year, and an additional 10 were new, especially towards the end of the year last year. So we really look at that as a really nice glow for us at WMS right now, that our kiddos are feeling as if there is at least one trusted adult that they feel like they can go to. That's really important, especially at the middle school age. Another piece of data that we pulled out was the responses for, I feel like I belong in my school. Now, taking into consideration, of course, where our kiddos are developmentally, we still had 25, almost 26% say most of the time, and 32%, almost 32% say always. That tells us that there's a lot of our kiddos that do feel that they identify here at WMS. There's a lot of work to do still, but it's a good place to start.
Our goal -- oh, sorry.
And our goal right now would be to boost that initial 23% with continuing to do deep-dive really into see, like, is that coming from a specific grade level? Is it coming from a specific cohort? And then, as teachers, trying to identify who might be best to help bridge that gap. Another one that we pulled out was, I feel like I really belong in my classrooms. Now, that's 67% that say they do feel like they belong in our classrooms, either most of the time or always. Again, that's positive for us, but we still want to take a look at those kiddos that say only sometimes, and a couple that said rarely and never. And the last one that we -- was it the last one?
No.
Oh, we have a couple more. Sorry. Then we had one that said, my teachers help me understand what I need to learn and how to be successful in my studies. Out of 405 responses, we had 42.2% that said always, and 37.3% that said most of the time. So an overwhelming amount that said, in general, teachers, they feel as if their teachers in front of them want them to succeed, want to help them understand, want to help them learn and grow. My school is a place where I feel where people care about one another. That's huge for us. That's our goal that we're going after right now. We have about 50% that said always or most of the time. So we're halfway there. We're not there yet. We're halfway there. We had 40% that said sometimes, and that's the goal right now, that we're looking at boosting those sometimes. What made them choose sometimes versus most of the time? Was there a specific incident, or is there a specific time, things like that, that we can then probe a little bit more and ask more questions? And then I feel supported and respected in my school and my classroom. And then I feel supported and respected in my school and my classrooms. We had about, again, 50% of our kiddos saying always or most of the time with another almost 30% saying just sometimes. So again, that's a great opportunity for us to ask those probing questions of our students. So that brings us, like, what's next? All right, you took all this data. What are you going to do with it? What's the point of taking data if you don't then plan, right? So we, of course, work really closely with our administration. We're very lucky that they often pop into PBIS meetings as well. We have almost at least one at every single meeting, if not more. But we are definitely participating as a staff on things like our staff development. We are all reading connections over compliance as one of our staff goals this year to really try and leverage those relationships and understand where our middle schoolers are developmentally-wise. We also have been very, very clear with the support of our administration that it's okay to stop the moment, stop the actual quote-unquote curriculum to reteach expectations. You can hear Ms. Peterson say oftentimes, like, you know, a pinch of prevention is worth, you know, a pound there. Like, it's just what we have to do. We have to prioritize what our students need, especially coming after these COVID years from the pandemic. They need us to stop the moment and reteach. And another thing that we're excited to kind of start delving back into too is identifying those people that kiddos do have connections with. We've done a little bit of staff work already, trying to see like where teachers and students might align, where relationships might be, so that you can leverage past relationships. You can go visit that fifth-grade teacher that you were really close with, that you felt very tied to, if you're a seventh grader and you're still really struggling. You can take a minute with that eighth-grade teacher who might be your drama coach, even if you're a sixth grader, and do a check-in and a one-on-one, using the staff in all the ways that we're meant to, using our community as a community. That's what our middle school right now is really going after. I think so.
Don't say that's it, that's a lot. That's amazing. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair. Great presentation. I love the fact how you are all bringing it all back to the sense of belonging. So I really appreciate that. I have one question. On the student goals, there was a bullet that said 100% of students are able to give feedback on multiple occasions. We as parents, right, and we've been around a lot of kids. We know that most kids don't really speak up. Have there been instances of this? And if so, can you just give us some examples of?
You mean instances of them giving feedback?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, almost daily.
Really? Good.
At least to me. The kids know that I run the store. I'm the one that usually sends out the announcements about the events and just in my classes. Guys, remember, if there's something you want in the store, if there's an event you want, if there's an idea you have, please, you know, find me. And so they, you know, students find me in the hallway, or they say something in class, or they utilize Google Classroom, or they can message me on Clever, or they email me and they've done it all. So they really have. And then sending out those surveys, that was just a taste of one of them. We have sent them out, you know, what do you want in the school store? Just all sorts of things. And we always get really good, I think, numbers responding.
I also am one of the co-leaders of Student Council. And so we actually have this year decided to have like two, we have like co-vice presidents on Student Council who are in seventh grade. We're waiting to see if our eighth grader is going to decide to be our president. But with those students, they'll also attend a PBIS meeting once a month as a student representative, so that they can talk through with us like in real time. No, like, this is what we would like on this side of the building. This is what we see over here. So to have their input like in real time will be really great too, because they can speak up and say, no, we don't want that. Or, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
We did also hit them up during summer school, both in the summer school program and the enrichment program, and just kind of surveyed them with our ideas, such as when we changed to the ROR tickets, because prior to COVID, we had had kind of a different motto and the kids were having trouble remembering it. So we kind of went with something a little more catchy with the ROR.
No, it's great, thank you. You're definitely building a sense of community, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
In addition, just to point out that the survey you saw will be reissued to measure growth in the middle of the year and at the end of the year as well.
Thank you.
One last thing. We didn't put it in there, but we have started to look at kind of some tier, part of Gav talked about it too, like the tier-one interventions. And we have started to look at some tier-two things. An Educator Handbook will help with that too. You can look at the data and determine, you know, by grade level, what time of day are problems happening, grade level, et cetera. And then try and target, you know, okay, they're having a problem with the cafeteria being dirty after eighth-grade lunch. How can PBIS help with that? And what sort of positive incentives can we give them instead of lecturing and consequences? So we're starting to look at those now that we have a solid base in place.
Love it. Thank you.
Just another piece of information. You guys, great job, both schools so far, and I know the high school will be great too. The surveys that are going out for student feedback are also going to be given at all schools. You guys are just a couple steps ahead of everybody, modified developmentally for the students at each of the schools. And they will be the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year for the district overarching plan that we just approved. But they will be doing their own additional surveys as they've been doing and adding that data to use and improve the climate and culture. Again, it all falls under that first bucket, right? Safe learning environments and capturing student voice. So I want to compliment you on your hard work and thank you.
Yeah, you guys are doing an amazing job. Sounds really data-driven. Curious about the surveys, are they anonymous or can you drill down to which students, for example, feel like they don't have a single adult in the building?
We can drill down.
So technically, they are anonymous in that we do not ask them to write their name on the survey, but because we collect email, we are able to go back. So when there were things that were alarming, we were able to go back and like interview a couple of kiddos and get more feedback, which is kind of how we figured out who was the friends who identified not having a teacher, because that was obviously glaring something that we were like, we need to take a look at that right away. And those questions were on like the first part of the survey. And the second part of the survey was all about like, did you receive a ROR ticket? What do you want in the school store? Like, do you have any questions? Do you have any comments? And I wish we had put it, but it was kind of heartwarming too that a lot of kids wrote either no, thank you, or I have nothing else to say, thank you, or I love WMS, or... It was really cute. So, you know, happy to pass on some more of that too at any point.
Yeah, I know, it's great. And, you know, as a parent of a middle schooler, I think, you know, it's really exciting to be able to have your voice and naming the school store and figuring out, but sunglasses have been a really big hit. So, you know, giving them...
Can you leave your aside for me?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So it's great, yeah, all great things. You have a lot to be proud of. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great job. Next up is Bartlett High School. Gina, are you representing Bartlett High School? Good evening.
All right, so ours looks a little bit different. We've been doing PBIS since about 2016. Amy spoke a little bit about the TFI. We took ours at the very end of the school year last year. From 2018, we're at 70%. And starting over now, last year, where we ended the year at 50%. So we'll take it again this year and see where we're at with, you know, a new team and different initiatives in place. So our team consists of myself, all of our admin participate, but I'm the one that's kind of tagged with the team. I have two leads, one's a teacher, one's an IA. Several teachers, a couple paras that have joined. Our school nurse wanted to be on the team, as well as our custodian wanted to be on our team. We're heading towards students and possibly family. We're not there yet. We want to make sure our program's done with fidelity in our building before we add a little bit more. So right now, outside of school, they meet at least once a month, but that doesn't, that, you know, they, there's a lot going on during the school day, every single day, that everyone leans, lends a hand to and more. So we have a rubric also. We have BHS, be accountable, have respect, and strive for personal best. We've kept those three markers since 2016 and just, you know, have tweaked the inside, the meat of it a little bit as years go by. But those are hung up in every one of our classrooms and all the common areas. And it's to stress the common language for all, like you've heard at the other two schools. We added in the COVID piece and we're just, we're keeping that there. But, so that's, it's just that common language. So on an everyday basis, we have instituted daily shout-outs. And that's just the chance for the teachers to submit names for every kid and how they, these students stood out according to the matrix. How were they accountable? How did they have respect? How did they strive for their own personal best? They submit them online and I actually post them on the TVs in the cafeteria and in the hallways every night. I couldn't believe the first day that we did it, they were watching me type and they were all standing and someone took a picture and they're all, their mouths are open and they're staring at the TVs. I didn't realize they could see me typing it as I was going through. But we don't have tickets. I listened to my fifth grader come in and say, you know, mommy, you need to do this at the high school. And we're working on something. I said, Xander, it's not the same. But, so ours is a lot of the praise, everyday verbal praise with our kids and just getting it out there. They love seeing their names up there. They love seeing their pictures up on the TVs. So right now, our everyday is the positive praise. We, this year, have instituted or reinstituted from a few years ago, the Journey Program. And this is a program where there, it's a targeted group of students that does and can grow, you know, any day depending on the student's needs. But it's really looking at that middle group of students that are struggling somehow socially, emotionally, behaviorally, academically. And it gives them a chance to say, you know, I need five. I'm going to go down to the Journey Program. Or a teacher the chance to say, you know, I can see something that you can't, why don't you go take five? So they go down, they take that breather, regroup, and then they come back to class. So we reinstituted that this year for the first time. And then we, right now, our tier-three program is, we do have the Quest program up and going, new staff in there, and we're getting there with that program as well. It's small right now. So those are the everyday. We're looking at how do we build in other tier-two programs into our regular classrooms as well, just organization and just the everyday things teachers can do on a smaller scale that doesn't have to be outside of the classroom, that's still tier-two, targeting a smaller group of kids. The next few slides that you'll see, I just outlined what we've done so far. So heading into the school year, we, our team did the freshman orientation and barbecue. It's a team that's been together for the most part, so they really work well together. They did a scavenger hunt, they led the barbecue, they did a presentation for all of the kids coming in, the freshmen coming in. It was kind of like a game show, they were throwing out T-shirts if they answered questions correctly. So that's how we started the year. And then for the first time, and one of our biggest struggles has always been staff fidelity, implementing this school-wide. So we started the year off in a, you know, a different mindset. We did a big training at the beginning of the year. Our staff were all trained by our team in the different types of positive reinforcement, how to, you know, positive classroom management, and just the progression of all the consequences. You saw it at the middle school, we too gave out that, you know, piece of paper in your back pocket to always have of, if this happens, what happens? What do you do? How do you respond positively? And if you need to, you know, that behavioral write-up. We've used Power School forever. We're now using Educator's Handbook and all of our staff have been using it now right from that first week that we were trained on it. And the data that we get is amazing. We can really pinpoint the wins, the wheres, the who's, and, you know, the times of the days, everything. So we take that data and we use it, you'll see it through the other slides, to pinpoint something each month. And like I said, we hung up that matrix everywhere in our building. That's all August. September, we asked all of our staff to do the school-wide shout-outs and that's, everyone just submitted as many as they could to kind of get this going. And then we also implemented staff shout-outs where staff can, you know, lift up what other, their other peers are doing as well. October, we started our themes. So we went to daily shout-outs. We did, we started our Student of the Months in October and we, again, we use the matrix. And every department nominates a student together. So they all meet in their departments, take a few minutes, and they come up with that one student or two students and how were they respected, something very specific. And it really gives everyone a chance to look at every student, not just, you know, the ones that are shining all the time in your classrooms. So we do that every month. And then this past, we focused on the phones in October. We did Ghost Your Phone Tober. And anyone without cellphone violations using the data in Power School and Educator's Handbook entered all the kids into raffles and we pulled some names. November, what we're doing now, again, shout-outs, again, Student of the Months. And this time, we focused on the tardies. And we said, don't be a tardy turkey. And we are, again, anyone without tardy violations either to class or to school. And we'll look at the data from our two systems. They'll be entered into raffles for this month. And then December, they have a lot of ideas that they're already starting on, on top of the normal two, but they're going to do a small little, hopefully fundraiser, I don't know if they've submitted that yet, for Candy King messages to students. They want to do, don't be a Grinch, where students, teachers can nominate students that they've seen exhibit specific acts of kindness to each other for raffles at the end of the month. A kindness sticky wall where students can either leave sticky notes for other students that where they've seen other kids do kind things, or they can take one if they've, if they feel like that pertains to them. And then, once every quarter, we do a school-wide celebration where teachers can nominate as many students as they want that have upheld the Bartlett Way across the board. So they have to be, we look at different categories. So they're passing six out of their seven classes. They have had three or fewer unexcused absences or tardies. And again, just upholding that Bartlett Way. And again, it's all guided by the data in our systems, as well as their recommendations. And then we just do something where it's a holiday celebration, there's games, there's musics, there's, and all of that. So that's where we're at right now. And again, our big push is just to implement more of those tier-twos where we can catch some of those kids that, you know, have slipped or may be slipping. And really to do this with fidelity across the board where it's, you know, we all know what it is. We can all say what be accountable, have respect, and strive for personal best means, but to truly just make that a, you know, like second nature to all of us. That's it.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments from the committee? I love the kindness wall. That's really a great way to, you know, show, I guess, gratitude, kindness, and really highlight some of the quiet, nice things that students do for each other.
Yeah, and the names will be on the back, so it'll be anonymous, so they don't have to worry about if they say something, you know, they're, to be afraid to have their name out there.
That's great. Good stuff happening at all of the schools. And it was so neat to watch as each school presented, people from other schools were sort of like nodding and, you know, so it's great to see everybody taking in some new ideas and that sort of thing as well. So, great, great. If there are no other questions, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, also under Old Business, which is the superintendent search update. Good evening, Tracy Novick from MASC. Thank you to all of the PBIS teams. Really appreciate you coming out.
Good evening. It's good to be with you again. I'm glad we were able to make this work. Thanks for making time on the agenda. And so what I gave to the committee earlier is, and let me stress the word draft, says it in big letters across there as a watermark for a reason, an outline of the timeline in terms of the superintendent search. So when I, when we were with you last time, we did talk about sort of the deadlines that you have in front of you and making sure that we're sensitive to those while trying to make sure that we hit all of our marks in terms of giving enough space and time to the various things that need to happen. So I did put some stars in here in terms of places where there, there's a little bit more flex in the schedule. And of course, I don't need to tell anyone in... And, of course, I don't need to tell anyone in education that we, of course, now are running up to the period of the year where we have these breaks every so often, too. So, the, the one thing we can guarantee is that, you know, unless it's something like a position being posted, there's not going to be a lot going on in terms of superintendent search during those, those times. So, the first thing that, that we'll be bringing forward is time for there to be public input and district input into what it is that the district needs for a superintendent at this time. So, as we discussed, really making sure that the community of Webster gets a chance to say, "Here's what's working, here's what's not working, here's what we think we need in leadership." That, we'll include a survey, so that part is, is straightforward. I'll, I can, I'll be putting that together over the next couple of days. We can put that up right away, as soon as it's together. But the part that, that I would stress is, I think, pretty important, is for there to be time for staff, and also for the public, to, if they wish to do input in person. And that's why there's a little bit of flex in time in here, because ideally, in a perfect reality, what I like to do is actually go to the scheduled staff meetings and take 15 minutes, 20 minutes with each of those. Now, obviously, this is sensitive, this is a question of when you actually have those staff meetings, and whether or not, there's only one of me, they haven't replicated me yet, so whether or not I can actually make all of them. That, obviously, is a scheduling question, we can work on that offline. But that's why there's a little bit of flexibility in here. Also, generally, I try to make sure there's at least one evening where I'm at the high school, at one of the other schools, and we publish to the community that they're welcome to come and give input. Some people prefer to do that, rather than give a survey. And then, I would like to have an opportunity to work with someone in the central office, for me to schedule time to meet with the central administrators, with the principals, with the student council, and really, honestly, with the rest of the district staff. So, if we can cycle through custodians and nurses and everyone else, you know, usually, if I can set up camp somewhere in the district and have that sort of scheduled, that is ideal. And I will say that, you know, certainly, we obviously want to make sure that the teachers get their voices heard, but I also find it really valuable to actually have, you know, I've gotten really valuable information from talking to the custodial staff, for example. And ideally, also, to the, you know, you had a student rep here earlier, it's great if I can have a chance to meet with the student council. So, that's sort of the, the first part of this. That's the, at least, that week after Thanksgiving, first week of December, if we need it, moving into that third week of December. And that will really be a question of scheduling, as to whether or not we need that third week of, that, that third week of December, second week of December. Depending on the time we need, I would then, the next thing that happens is, I bring that information back to you in the form of a report. That does need to be at a posted public meeting. And part of what is in that report is my recommendation to you as to the description of the position. So, as we discussed when I was here before, you know, what a superintendent does in Massachusetts is a fairly sort of standard set of actions, but what it is that this district needs for leadership at this time is a particular set of descriptors. And that's what I would be bringing forward to you, from the, the feedback that, that we had gathered from the community. That posting is entirely under your purview, so I'm bringing you a draft, what you do with it is entirely up to all of you. I will say that, generally speaking, committees find that it, if they're tuned into the community, it's reflective of what they think, too, but that is up to you, for you to decide. Once I've met with you and you've approved that, we then post it on all of the places that we discussed before. Goes up on the MASC website, goes up on the MASs website, goes out over our list that we keep of about 600 people who are either superintendents or aspiring superintendents, goes out over our national list, gets posted on LinkedIn, gets posted on Instagram, all of that kind of thing. Not Instagram, Twitter, assuming we still have Twitter, then. The, that then will be up for at least a month. And this is one where we probably want to have a little bit of a conversation as to your level of sensitivity, in terms of, I would recommend giving it until the 27th of January, which gives you, really, you know, assuming that we've got, that we've managed this by the ninth, it gives you the full six weeks, that's ideal. If we're doing it on the 16th, closing on the 27th, gives you five weeks. I'm not convinced there's gonna be a huge amount of difference between the five weeks and the six weeks, the people who are looking, they know where they're looking. And quite frankly, I will say this, there's plenty of educators at the table, I always find this vaguely amusing, about half to two-thirds of the applications are gonna come in in the final 24 hours. It never fails. And I cannot explain it, superintendents are lovely people, and they majority wait till the last minute to put the applications in. So, whatever that date is, that date will be, and the applications won't come any sooner if it's a different day. What I then will do, if you notice, I did actually then schedule, earlier, partway during this posting period, a meeting with the search committee. And either at the time that I meet with you, for you to approve the posting position, or at a subsequent meeting, because we then do have some flexibility, some flex time there, where the position is out, and there's kind of nothing else going on. You will need to work with me to outline the seats on the search committee. And by that, as we had a conversation before, you know, what representation of teaching, what representation of parents, what representation of the community, what do you want in terms of students, that kind of thing, on the committee? Do you want school committee representation? Do you not want school committee representation? All of those questions are valid. That is not a decision that you have to make before Thanksgiving, it's not a decision that you have to make, honestly, even before the posting. But that will be something we'll work together on, and then, how are you going to actually appoint the people to those seats? Is that something where you actually want to vote individuals? Is that something where you want to have an application process? Frequently, I recommend that, you know, if you want to have a principal, have the principals decide, first of all, who can make all the meetings, and secondly, who they want to have represent them, those sorts of things. We'll have that discussion at the time. I do meet with them, though, for an orientation, because, of course, they are a public body, which means that they're subject to the open meeting law. Frequently, they have representation that doesn't, that isn't used to functioning under that, so it's important for training. And also, make sure that they're briefed on the confidentiality of the process, because all of their work is done in executive session and remains confidential, with the exception of the release of the finalists. There's never any information that gets shared from that. As you know, that's because you'll get, you will get better applications, if that's the case. So, we do that, that way, they're prepared when the applications close, the applications are shared with them over the course of a weekend, I meet with them that following Monday, and they select who they want to actually bring in for semifinalist interviews. I then, and then I'm giving myself a little bit of time to do scheduling, with the search committee then meeting effectively, probably every night, the week of February 6th, to have interviews. Now, in terms of every night, it will depend on how many semifinalists they want to bring in, that's one of the things I make sure I'm clear to them about, in terms of orientation. That is a question of their scheduling. They will do the interviews in executive session, make their selection for semifinalists. And then, the intent would be for them to actually announce that at the next school committee meeting. Now, I try to sort of balance this in terms of, I don't want them to feel like they have to keep that information secret for a really long time, without it being announced. I also don't want to have you scheduling lots and lots of extra meetings that you don't necessarily need to. But at the next meeting, at which the finalists are announced, that is also when I will be working with you all, in terms of the next step, step of scheduling, which, as we discussed, will actually need your calendars at the table, because it will be members of the school committee going out in non-quorum groups to visit the finalist districts, and the finalists coming here to spend a day in this district, prior to you then interviewing the finalists in public session, and then making your decision. So, at this point, this has us wrapping up the first week of March. Now, as I said, there are pieces of this that we can try to push back a bit, to get us back into February. Things like the length of the posting, things like how quickly we turn around, turn around the information that I'm gathering, and that sort of thing, and also, the, the flexibility I've tried to give it in terms of scheduling. But that's sort of the general outline of where we're at. And so, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, I'm happy, obviously, to take questions, input, anything else you have at this time.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
It's a daunting process, but you've certainly broken it down into very digestible steps, and seems to be very reasonable timelines. But I'll open it up to the committee, any thoughts, questions, comments about this?
Through the chair. I'm just wondering how realistic this is in terms of getting set, something set up for next week?
So...
In terms of public input?
Mm-hmm. So, in terms of public input, I would be scheduling that for December 6th or 7th. I did try to give a little bit, so that's actually the week after. So, with exactly that notion in mind, that if we were to decide in the next day or so, or even Monday, the 28th, we could turn it around and say, "We're doing that the following week." And really, all it takes is someone having a room open for me, and then, everybody blasting it everywhere, in terms of the, the communication.
And that's both for staff input, would you be doing that the week of December 6th as well?
So, that's the part that actually, I think, is probably the most complicated to schedule, but that's probably more like my working with the superintendent's office, my working with, you know, my getting information from the principals, in terms of, when do people have meetings? When are people available? As you know, you know, I'm, I'm a half hour up the road, my coming down a couple of times in order to get that done is, I mean, that's my job, literally. So, that's not, that is not a big deal. It is more a question of what, how I can make sure that I'm doing that in a way that actually works around the district, that is, is less disruptive, and actually fits into, if possible, work that's already being done.
And what about the survey? When, how soon would that go out?
So, what I was, my plan was to, was to either Monday or Tuesday of next week, actually put that together. And I will be honest, the questions tend to be fairly standard, so it's more a question of my tweaking it to make sure that it's, it's, fits the district, and I also try to make sure that, like, it has your colors and your backgrounds and that kind of stuff.
Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you. Great questions. Anyone else?
I have one more question. So, how specific do we have to be tonight?
So, I guess, and, and I don't want to put any members of the administration on the spot, I guess my question would be, realistically speaking, and please be blunt with me about this, if it seems realistic that I would actually have the opportunity to be able to meet with much of the staff between that week after Thanksgiving, and then the week after that, those two weeks.
Essentially, next week, and then the week after that?
Yes.
We have...
It's odd to have these questions, conversations on a Tuesday.
I, I'm happy to jump in.
Yeah, okay, go for it.
Yes, we can make available a spot for you in, in the schools. We could send, set you up at the high school, we could set you up at the middle school, and then we could set you up at the elementary school on a day of your choice, and teachers can come in to you freely, we've done that before, to provide feedback. People will most likely come during their prep. And, or, you can select a day at each of the schools after school, where you open it up to all of the staff, so you're not sitting and waiting, that might make more sense, and we can happily work with you to do that. I, I want this to go successful for the district.
Thank you. So, I guess my only question is, is there, are there scheduled staff meetings after school, where you actually would have all of your faculty?
They're, they're on the same day.
Okay.
For the middle and the high school. And I'm not sure what Tuesday of the month, the 2nd?
So, it wouldn't be, the next one, that wouldn't be until the 13th?
Yeah.
Right?
So, you probably want to get your, your feedback before then.
Okay. Just because that tends to be more successful, in terms of actually getting everybody's input, when it's, like, you're already here, so let's spend 15 minutes doing it. That would be, I think that would be my only concern. But, to your point, that then, but, that would probably then bump us an extra week.
Our faculty meeting is December 6th.
Oh, okay, okay. Great. I mean, so, if that's possible, to give me 15 minutes during it...
The 6th? Yours is the 6th as well?
And I will say that I have managed the, you know, the shuffle within, luckily, this is not a huge amount of space to be going between things, of actually doing two faculty meetings that are at the same time.
Well, we, we'd actually send you to three, so...
That would be fantastic.
You could do the Webster Middle School, and then go over to Bartlett High School, and then Park Ave is a little, they end a little later, and then you could go over to Park Ave.
Excellent. Okay, that, that's fantastic, then that actually even works with everything. So, honestly, if I did that, and then we, if, if there isn't anything in the district, that's why I actually gave you two dates, if there isn't anything in the district, the evening of the 6th, that would be an obvious conflict, like, everybody's already planning on being at X, I could, we, I could also then have that evening be the evening for a public session.
It is, I don't think that, I don't, no, it's the school building committee.
Right.
We have a school building. Okay.
Okay.
So, the 7th?
Whatever you think. If you think that's a huge conflict, then I'll do it the 7th. If you think that, that's probably not going to be much of a difference, I'll do it the 6th.
What time are you thinking? Are you thinking, I mean, I'm almost wondering if we did it prior to the school building committee meeting, it would, it would give us a hard stop, but it would ensure that some of the folks in the community that are most invested in the schools might be able to make it out a little earlier.
Certainly. Okay, absolutely.
Is that at 6?
Yep, and we don't need to, we don't need to sort of give times on all of this, as long as there's someone I can work through in order to get this. Okay, that's great.
Through the chair, sorry. What time is the school building committee? Because I don't want the public input session to be too early, because that's sometimes not realistic for families.
Working folks, yeah, that's true.
So, 5, 5, I find, that meeting time is a little early.
Yeah, you're right. I want, well, we can take it offline and think about, maybe even...
I mean, I have both of, we, we don't have to, you don't have to decide this tonight.
Yeah.
My, my evenings there are set aside for you for that. All right, so if, I mean, if we think we can do that, and if, again, sort of looking at central administration, if you think that within next week and the week after, there also could be a day where I could have time with the principals, time with central administration, and time with others in the district, I think you probably could then aim for a posting on the 9th, without that being a problem, assuming that I would have an opportunity to meet with all of you, for you to actually vote the position. And that may be a reason to keep the meeting on the 6th, with the idea that, and I don't know when you, what your flexibility is, I will say, I have a meeting on the 8th, so I won't be able to meet with you that evening. But if there's a way for us to potentially put a meeting together on the 7th, or on the 9th, honestly, to get it posted, as much as the 9th is a Friday, we could get it posted by the end of that week, or have it posted by Monday, the 12th.
So, just another question. Obviously, we want to get as much input as we possibly can to feed the posting.
Yes.
If there's additional input that we would have liked to have had, we don't have it yet.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate to post and continue to solicit input that we can utilize during the interview process?
You can, yep. We just, the one thing I would say is, you, what you want to do is say that you're continuing, at that point, you would want to actually effectively tweak the survey, and say, just realize that, because when the posting goes up, the posting needs to go up and not change, just for, as legal reasons, as much as anything. You certainly can sort of keep the survey up. And I will say that one of the things that I always share with the search committee is the actual posting, both for their own use in using it to evaluate candidates, but also, frequently, that will inform the questions that they ask in the semifinalist interviews.
Mm-hmm. Great, okay.
Through the chair. Can you clarify what the meeting on the 9th is? That's to confirm the job description?
So, that's, that, so, assuming you would want to do it on the 9th, so, I don't want to presuppose anybody wants to say, "Yes, it's a Friday in December, let's have a school committee meeting." Okay, so, but to sort of give ourselves as much flexibility within that two-week span as possible. Yes, so what I would be doing is, I would be putting together, whenever the sort of last meeting I have is, is also the time that I close the survey. I take all of that information, and I put it together in a composite. So, I say, "Here are the things that I'm hearing, that I have heard multiple times from multiple places." They, and I'll tell you, that the, the three things that I consistently ask are, what are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges the district is facing? And what does the district need in terms of leadership right now? And so, what you will get is a report from me that says, "I am hearing frequently," and I won't share it with you unless I've heard it from, say, you know, I've heard it both from the teachers and from the parents, I heard it from the students, and I also heard it from the custodial staff, or that sort of thing. Here are the things that are, are strengths, here are the things that are challenges, here's Here are the things that are strengths, here are the things that are challenges, here's what I'm hearing over and over again in terms of what the district is looking for leadership, and that will be the position description. And what I'll want is a vote from you that says, yes, this is the description of the position that we want you to move forward with as what we're looking for for the next superintendent. So it is not a long meeting, assuming that you don't want to, you know, do a lot of copy editing.
And we decide the makeup of the search committee at that same meeting?
You do not have to do it at that same meeting, because once the position is posted, we all have five weeks or so before the search committee has to do anything. So I would want to get together with you not too long after that, so that you then have some time to say, well, we're going to send something out to the parents to solicit applications, and we want to give them a week and a half, two weeks to respond to that. So we don't want to wait too, too long, but you don't actually have to decide that at that same time.
Great questions. Anyone else have any questions or comments? No? We need a vote. Trishy, as usual, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And just let me offer to, really honestly to all of you, you'll hear me say this over and over again, my, you all I know have my, my contact information. My contact information is actually very easily, easy to find, so if any, anyone else in the room finds that they have questions on how is this working, how do we do this? You have a lot of people at the table here who are in positions where you're expected to know what's going on, and I know this is kind of process where you kind of can feel a little, a little question as to whether or not you do, please don't, please feel free to contact me with questions. Great.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Much appreciated.
I will, who is it best for me to get in touch with in terms of scheduling? Should I be channeling that through you, Kelly, and you can direct me from there, or?
With the buildings?
With, in terms of the buildings and the meetings. Do you want me to work through the superintendent's office? Do you, how do you want me to do it?
Maybe we can work together?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I, I think that two of the principals are here for the staff meetings. I'll send out an email tomorrow to the principals saying that you're going to make the rounds. I'll CC you, and I'll CC Kelly. And in terms of the district leadership team, we do have a meeting on the 9th. If you wanted to come in at 9, you could have my team for about an hour before we get knee-deep into budget.
So that's probably, the only challenge, that's probably not enough time for me to then turn around and actually be ready for them that evening.
Okay, we'll schedule that after.
So if you want to, if you want to separate it out and make it work around people's schedules, it's not a problem for me to be here, wait in between things, I'm flexible about this.
We're happy to help.
Okay, thank you. We good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
We're very good, thank you.
I don't want anybody to be sort of unclear at this point.
No, we're already stressing about schedules, because we want to be sure that we're present for everything that we can be present for, but this was perfect.
So let me tell you this part, in terms of my gathering information, it's great if you all, and I'll say this bluntly, don't plan to come. And I will present it to you, and that's not for sort of lack of trust or anything else, but that way, they're not feeling like they're having to talk to the school committee about it, they're talking to, you know, who am I? I'm not from here, I don't live, right? Like, come tell me what you honestly think. So don't feel like you have to, you know, bump those things into your schedule. The parts that you'll need to be is the voting of the position, the reporting out of the finalists, and then you'll, you're going to have plenty to do once we get to the finalist part, believe me.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great, thanks, Trishy.
Thanks.
We'll see you soon. All right. Well, in the interest of taking our agenda completely out of order, we're going to continue on that trend, and we're going to move on to, the next item on the agenda will be under, under the superintendent's report, but actually, under the principal report. I know we have some coaches here from Girls on the Run, so if you all would like to come on up and talk to us about that, and then we'll go back to Ms. Polyafika to talk about the rest of her update. Yeah, you guys can take some chairs there, just make sure that you have a green light on your microphone if you're talking into it. That, that microphone's off in the corner there.
That's okay. I think we first want to start by thanking all of you for supporting this program throughout the season. I know we had to be in contact with the superintendent's office a lot, the before-and-after school programming. We saw many friendly faces out there for both our practice and our 5K that was this past Sunday, so thank you very much. And then the community in general, just signing their kids up, and then even the other kids in the school that saw that it was happening, they were just in awe of the program. They were like, what, you guys are running? I want to do that, I want to do that. So we really appreciate all of your support. This slideshow Ms. Forget made, if, you can just like scroll through it, there's nothing specific on it.
Right, and I didn't make it for, for you tonight, I actually made it for the girls. It was something we presented to them as we went along after the, the practice 5K. We put this together so they could see that, just important moments. The first was the, the practice 5K. We wanted to celebrate our embassy, the PTO, and the volunteers, everything moved so fast that day, I don't know if they even were aware of what was happening. It was wonderful with all the staff that came out to help us. We had a great finish line that they ran through that Ms. McDonald, our maid, and her husband was out there holding it, and all the girls ran through it, you can see it right there. So we got a picture of all the girls after they finished their 13 laps, and so they're holding a certificate, so they're all here with their name. So that's all of our girls on the run that showed that day. We have 19 girls, but I think there were 18 present that day.
Yes.
So that's all of them, that you scroll through and see them all, great faces, they all look happy after all that running and walking.
We had our big celebration last practice yesterday, and so we actually printed the photos for the kids, so they could either take them home to their families, and then towards the end of the slideshow, there's photos of the kids with their running buddies from this past Sunday, and they made their running buddies thank you cards for participating in the run, and then we also did thank you cards for people that came out during our practice 5K.
I'll be getting those. We also, the Rose Room here in Webster made cookies for the girls, so when they finished, they all got a cookie, and that came from the Rose Room, they donated them, it was, we just had, the PTO was great with helping us with this also, so you can see some of the girls here eating cookies, that was, they were thrilled. There was hot cocoa, there was snacks, it was a hot day, to be honest with you, we had these t-shirts that we wore for the first time, and we, we wanted to be wearing tank tops, it was so warm that day, but it was great. So some of the girls took them off because it was too warm, but, and then we had, one of the board of directors came out one day, she actually took this picture one day, just to watch us practice one day, and then here's some just pictures from our regular practices, just having fun. You know, we had a lot of fun every day with practices. There was, every practice, there was a theme, and a special word that they had to remember, and it was just, and the whole practice was around that theme. And of course, it was a social-emotional program, it wasn't just a running program. So the friendships that were created through this program was really what was inspiring, too, is third and fourth graders are just now friends, and even just girls that I didn't know before are now, they, they're stopping by my doors, you know, daily just to say hi, and, you know, it's happened today, too, even the program's over, and the connections that have been built are just fabulous. And then when we talk about sense of belonging, this program definitely was that for the girls. I know even, I feel a greater sense of belonging amongst the students. So it's just, I, I love this program, and I was so happy to find out that there's multiple curriculums to go with this, so it's not just one season, so it continues on. So next season, if we're lucky enough to do this again, there is a new curriculum, so we won't be redoing the same one. So we're going to be learning as we're going again, if we, you know, I'm hoping that we'll all be doing this again together. We haven't talked that far, but we just-
Yeah, so like she's saying, there's a 21 lessons in the Girls on the Run curriculum, and so they sometimes change it every season. So we're hoping if we do continue it, we'll get a new group of girls, so a lot of girls have the opportunity in our school, but if we do get ones that re-sign up, it'll be different lessons for them. It's really about building confidence, and then the physical, and then community, that's why we did the library as a community impact project. The girls had a blast, which we were kind of like, ah, do they really want to? Because they had to vote on it, and they kind of weren't for organizing the library, but then they all had a blast.
So this was the community impact project, it was great, because our library has kind of, since the, since the pandemic-
Looks like that.
Well, it really doesn't look like that. But we had to reorganize a lot of things, things were just not in the, right where they were supposed to be, so we were, had to teach the girls, too, how to put books in the right order, so there was some math involved as well, so there was a lot. It was, it was fun, though, we had some music going, and the girls really worked well together, it was teamwork again, so just on and off the, you know, the, the track, or we ran in the, outside in the parking lot, but this was a great picture, because Girls on the Run did a great job of setting up stations when they got there, they were free stations, it was, you know, they could go and dazzle themselves. So you can see the girls have some jewels on their faces, they got to spray paint their hair, they have, some had tattoos on their faces that said, you know, a goater, and just all kinds of different things. Look at, it was up there. So it was just great, the girls had a lot of fun doing that, just, you know, decorating themselves, and I can't even tell you how cold it was. It was absolutely freezing, it was snowing at one point, but the wind, it would just whipped right through us, so we were really trying to, you know, stay warm. You know, Mrs. Kelly's over there, was, was there, she witnessed how cold it was, she actually saved me, she, I took her hat, because I gave my hat to my running buddy. So there I am with my running buddy, who was fabulous, by the way, just ran the whole thing, I couldn't believe it, a little third grader ran the whole thing. So the, the, all of them did amazing. So we had teacher volunteers that came out as running buddies, we had moms and dads, we had aunts and, you know, just friends of the family as running buddies. Every girl had to have a running buddy, so, and everybody was matched. We were just, we had one girl that was sick and couldn't come, and then we had one that wasn't able to make it, so, but overall, we had a, there were 17 girls that ran, and it was great, they had the start where they had to start, and we ran around the campus of Assumption College. So there was three laps that we had to do, and so it was roads, it was a hill, too, so it was kind of good practice that we were running around Park Ave. We ran around the back, and we'd run back around, so they were getting used to some hills a little bit, so that was great. And then when they finished, we went through the finish line, and they received a medal, so this is one little girl with her medal, so I included that here, just so that everyone could see the medal, and they could get a snack afterwards, they had bananas, clementines, and granola bars, and waters, and so it was just, it was great. They put on a great event, it was very cold, but I, the girls were just excited, and we couldn't wait to get on the bus and be warm afterwards.
Girls on the Run also provided, if the students didn't have appropriate running sneakers, they actually donated, like Adidas running sneakers, so the girls, you know, they, street shoes are different than running shoes, so they actually provided them with the appropriate footwear. We also taught them running etiquette, like, they had to run, we would run around park at the, the parking lot at Park Ave, and the girls would be on opposite sides of the road, so we had to teach them to all stay on the same side of the road, and-
Even just how to run, just-
Pacing themselves, yeah.
Because that really wasn't in the curriculum, it wasn't about teaching them, it was more the social-emotional, but we had to teach them really how to learn how to listen to their bodies and not sprint, and, because it was different than gym class, so, which was great having Leslie, because she teaches gym, so it was great, I think having, you know, a counselor and teacher and gym teacher, it was just, I think the three of us meshed really well with- Yeah, absolutely, so I think that was really good for, for the girls. So just, because there was writing involved at times, and they had to reflect every day after practice, they had journals that they kept, and all the materials were provided. But beforehand, we did, we had to go through some training, we did online training, we did in-person training, we had PR and first aid trained, concussion, so we did a lot of pre-training before the program actually got started, and, and then of course, prepping for all the lessons, which were great, we had some fun ones.
It was definitely a positive, it was our first time running the program, so it was, you know, we went into it blind, and, but, at the, overall, the positive feedback from the girls, and the, it was hard for them. When we started running, my stomach hurts, my knee hurts, my foot hurts, we were like, come on, we can do it, but overall, the, the majority of them stuck with it.
Right, and they all say they want to do it again, they were sad. When we didn't run yesterday, we just had our celebration, we had cupcakes and Doritos, you know, things that we've been saying, no, don't eat those things.
You earned it, go ahead, have two cookies.
But it was, that was positive, too, because we, it was a celebration, it's a treat, you deserve it.
It just was a great sense of accomplishment for them, because it was hard. It was, so we had to teach them, and some of them did want to drop out, and we were like, we're a team, we're, you know, it's going to be hard, but this is going to be the reward at the end, is that feeling of accomplishment, that we all did it together and we finished it, as hard as it was, nobody, the majority, they didn't give up.
And that was really the, what we wanted them to get out of it, was that they can do hard things, and that, and not to give up, and that we are, and the whole concept of running buddies and learning to cheer each other on, we talked about star power, that was a big thing, is that everybody has their own, like, gifts and uniqueness, and that there, you need to kind of give that to, to help other people along, and the program was fantastic, and things like words matter, and we talk about all that stuff within our classrooms and-
Coping skills, breathing through when you get anxious, or you're upset, being able to, it's okay to talk to, you know, an adult, or tell somebody, and breathe through it, and don't get upset, don't react when you're upset, think about your words, you can't take your words back, so it's definitely skills that they will take up into the middle school, life coping skills, communication skills, that, that are really lifelong.
Patty, I think about your heart activity, remember the one that you taught us about, the crumpling up the heart years ago? So we had a great one with toothpaste, they had to squeeze out toothpaste on a piece of paper, and then they had to, as a team, try to get the toothpaste back into the tube of toothpaste, and the, and the lesson was that, you know, what, what you put out there, you can't always put back in, and that was the words matter lesson. And that day when they were running, every time they ran a lap, we had to write a letter on their arm, and it was words matter, and it was, that was, that was the day, and it was great, so they, every time they went around, they were watching, trying to figure out what the word of the day was, because that day was a mystery theme, so we didn't, they didn't know until the end of practice what the, what the mystery word was, so it was just great, great experience, and just-
Gave them a sense of belonging.
Mm-hmm, great takeaways for all of us. I, I think the girls are really sad that it's over, I do.
So in looking at the funding for it, so they had reached out and asked if we could fund it through ESAR, and learning about the program, thinking about how well it fit into the sense of belonging, how well it fit into the social-emotional aspects that ESAR tried to, or tries to, to meet, as well as the engagement piece, so it fit, it fit well. I learned recently, when we were looking at the possibility of, of doing this again and continuing on, that United Way actually funded half of our student tuitions for Girls on the Run, so it's a great piece for all of us to know, that, so that there's community partnerships there. I, I was at the practice, I wasn't at the, the Assumption College when I was at a memorial event for my own mom, but at the practice one, it was moving. It was very, very moving to see how the girls worked together, even though they got tired. One, at one point, one girl was like helping to, you know, carry the other one along, and there was such great family engagement. The families were like troopers, running, walking, whatever we had to do, but what a great way to bring the families out. And so, and then that was replicated again at Assumption College, and so it really met all of the, the buckets of ESAR. So we're really happy that we're able to make that work in that way, and we can talk about continuing it.
No pressure or anything, Patty.
That's what we talked about, get lines all night.
Did you guys have any questions?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
So I was not able to make either of the events, but just seeing it, watching it, just hearing, hearing you guys talk about it, I can't love this enough. I love running, I feel like it's a, it's a great way to work through any, anything that's happening. How many girls are able to sign up with the funding?
The Girls on the Run policy is two coaches for every-
Okay.
Because we had three coaches, they allowed us to have 20-
Okay.
Which is really not how it operates. I think they had a lot of confidence in us because we are teachers, and we're a high need district, so they were very comfortable with approving that, but that's not in the policy. So if we were going to do it on a bigger scale, technically, there could be 15 to 15. We did like the mix of third and fourth graders, they got to meet somebody new in the school, and they're not just hanging out with their best friends.
Right.
There is also a Heart and Soul program for grades six through seventh, like, no, or eighth, because our program technically goes three to five, but because we just wanted to keep our kids in video logs and-[1796.87]
A different timeframe too.
Yeah, it's a different timeframe too. Um, but there is that opportunity at the school too.
That makes sense. So the next season would be next fall then?
It's spring.
Or spring, okay.
And that's why the application deadline is December 1st. And that actually starts March 7th, big celebration.
Last year, they had it at Polar Park for the spring.
Oh, that's nice.
So, which is, and I know you.
Yeah, I went, I ran in with my niece. How I kind of got involved with it. And I was like, this is amazing.
It is.
Did some, and she had known because of her doctor, who was actually on the board.
Right, my doctor was on the board. And when he found out I was a teacher and I was a runner, said, well, we look for people like you. So then, you know, we talked about it last year and here we got it going, so.
No, I, I love it. And so thank you, all three of you for, for stepping up. And thank you to the rest of you for the support. Um, I just wanted to add a comment. And it, it's not directed at any one school, but I just wanted, you know, to put it out there that I can't really speak for the rest of the committee. But, um, you know, I would love to celebrate all of these happenings and be a part of it. So, you know, maybe a little bit better, you know, communication, um, that, you know, maybe emails or a monthly calendar. I know we've kind of been trying to work toward a monthly calendar, like, hey, this is coming up. These events are coming up. Um, you know, that way we'll all be kept in the loop and we can kind of bring the buildings a little bit more together as a district. So that's just a thought that I, that I had. Um, because I, I love these events. Even though I don't have a child in the district anymore, I'm still very invested and would love to attend as many things as I can. So, but thank you, thank you ladies again.
Yeah, amazing work. Anyone else from the committee have any comments or questions?
So Sheila, can we put you down as a running buddy?
This meeting is being recorded both audio and video. I mean, I was able to attend, you know, having a, a child at Park Ave, I'm in the know on what's up and coming. I think maybe more so than someone that doesn't have a child in the district. So, um, yeah, I mean, yes to everything that Patty said about just the engagement and the excitement and the camaraderie that, that came from these kids having this experience together. And they'll carry that with them for sure. I'm really intrigued about the Community Impact Project. Um, the, the Park Avenue Library, you may or may not know, has been a hot topic around here at school committee meetings. Um, what's happening, what happened?
So we just had, um, so it's, it's been a little bit in disarray since the pandemic just because we didn't have a library teacher. So some of the books are not organized the way they should be. So we had the girls start putting the books in the right places. So, so like just say, the number of books were in, should be in the 600s, they were in the 200s. So we just started to, started that process. It's not complete, but it's a start. Um, but we talked about how this would be a community impact project for our school. So the girls were really excited once they got started with it, but they saw how big of a project it was.
Yeah.
Um, I do want to just backtrack to your comment about not knowing about the, um, the events. We, the girls were really nervous and we kind of did try to keep it on a down low. Um, I know we talked to Amy a little bit about this because the girls expressed that they were really nervous. And they were afraid, um, to be, you know, around a lot of people, especially for the Practice 5K. So we didn't really want a lot of, you know, people. We wanted support, of course, so we, we kind of advertised through Class Dojo and things like that and newsletters. Um, because we, we wanted their friends and family to be there. But we were just afraid to have too many people there and have the girls just shut down because they were just nervous. And then once they had the, um, that under their belt, then we kind of had to talk to them more about, okay, now we have the real 5K and there's going to be lots of people. So I think because it was also very new to us as well, I think we just really didn't know what to expect either. So, um, just, it's been a learning process. And we certainly never meant to exclude anybody, but I think we were all, never realized how much work this whole program was supposed to be there. So we're happy with what, you know, that we did it. And, um, but we certainly, you know, will definitely make sure to, um, run the loop.
Yeah, through the chair. It, it wasn't a comment directed that because actually we did, we did know about it. We did talk about it at a prior school committee. It was just across the board.
I was writing furiously about the pep rally tomorrow too. So we just want to know.
Yes, because Amy did make that pretty clear.
I'm kind of thinking you guys like aren't on our PAE school-wide emails.
No.
You wouldn't need a personal email if we're having events, which we're doing those all around here.
We have school emails. We're just not on any distribution lists probably. I don't know.
And additionally, go on our website, our newsletters are posted every, every week that they go out. So, you know, just for anybody's information who might be watching, the website is a great place to see our weekly newsletters.
Great, thank you.
Which talks about things that have happened in the past and things that are upcoming.
Good deal. So what do you need from us to be able to do this again? Is it just funding or is there other support that you all need?
We absolutely have funding and I don't want you to miss the, the information so that you can, we can continue this great program.
And we do know more now too, because, um, the, the program itself is $175 for girls to participate in the program. So we, as we know with, in this district would be a lot of money for, for girls, for a lot of families. Um, so it's been wonderful that it's been, um, and we have, we can offer it as like a scholarship. But we have to advertise, I think, this a little bit differently so that families understand that it was, you know, through grants through the school and just more that we, they understand really how this came to be for them. So we've learned a lot about, you know, how to go about it. And like I said, it's been a learning process and, um, but as, as they, Leslie was saying, the sneakers, if families needed sneakers, they could request those. You had to provide sizes, but later in the year, we realized, okay, kids don't have proper sneakers. We could request them later in the year. And Girls on the Run was fabulous about things like that.
The $25 registration fee for the running buddy, that also, we would get emails from families. That just was, you know, difficult. Um, and that was, uh, Girls on the Run also waived that fee for families who reached out and were concerned about that. Um, just to assure that every girl had a running buddy. Um, so it's very accommodating and affordable for our community members. There's really no reason why any, any student would not be able.
Certainly with ESER funds and looking at building our sports program, this is a program that we want to stay for years and years and years. So I, I certainly don't see any, um, problem with funding, um, the spring and even next year. Um, but then we would have to take, take a look at, you know, incorporating that as a extracurricular in our teachers' union contract and, you know, looking at stipends for you all who are doing such a great job. Um, so we need to, um, proceed. You're empowering, um, young ladies to learn about themselves through the running. And it's only going to help them with all sorts of lifelong skills. And I'm just thrilled to hear all the detailed stories that you shared. And the fact that kids are building relationships with peers that are older and building relationships with you all. You're opening the doors for them to share whatever is on their mind. And it definitely falls under sense of belonging and building teams and building family engagement. So we will do whatever we can do to support you. Please do not miss the deadlines. And if I, if I have to personally go out and ask for in-kind donations, although we have the funds this year, I will.
Excellent. That's great. I heard there's a boys program too.
There is, but I think they need male coaches.
Oh, they do.
Let Me Run, so it's not this nonprofit.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I personally don't know anybody on the Let Me Run program. Um, and I haven't done a research to.
There is one, um, in Oxford. That's all I know, that they did, there is a program. I think it's run a little bit differently. Um, they don't.
That's a, that's a team. So like Oxford has a team that people can join on to be part of the Let Me Run. But, um, I, I, I did, I also researched into it. It seems to be not really local. It hasn't really taken on our here so much. That doesn't mean it can't. But as of right now, it's, it's not really.
And I don't know anything about the, the curriculum or anything like that. This really is just, the curriculum is fabulous.
Yeah, I mean, this seems amazing. As a boy mom, I have to ask about the boys program because that was the first thing my son asked about.
Absolutely.
But no, this is amazing.
This is how great programs come to be, um, with people who have passion about, um, the program themselves. And I hope for years this is running here. I really do. Thank you ladies for all that you did to get this up and running.
Yeah. That's been great. Thanks for coming and giving up your Tuesday night to share this with us. We love to hear about fun stuff that's going on at the school. So come on back if you have nothing to do on another Tuesday. Way to represent. Thank you. Have a great evening. So we're going to try to get back on track a little bit, but I think we proceed with the principal's report. Ms. Polievico, if you're ready, do you mind to hop in here? I know we're all over the place and then we'll get back on track. Great, thank you.
Um, so since my Girls on the Run was our number three, I will be skipping that. Um, I just want to talk briefly about, we did have parent-teacher conferences on the same night as the high school, as was mentioned at the private Victoria. Uh, we had a very successful afternoon and evening. We offered in-person, Zoom and by phone conferences to accommodate all of our families. Um, also a full array of translation through all of those three meetings as well. Um, families took advantage of all those options. We had an 86% attendance rate for conferences, which is really good. Next up, a PTO update. We had, again, a very successful fundraiser, um, with students selling over 1,400 items that resulted in us getting 40% profit from sales, almost $9,000 they were able to raise, um, for the PTO. So the PTO had often running, um, very active. They also hosted a Scholastic Book Fair this past Friday and Saturday, which was, um, well-attended. Um, we also had volunteers assisting with the book fair from the high school, National Honor Society. And while they were there, they also did some of the library work, um, organizing and refiling books. So we do now have a wand that goes with our valid book system to be able to start checking, starting to be able to inventory through our books as well. So we are making some progress. I did put out an invite for volunteers in our Missus newsletter. Um, I have eight parents volunteer to come in and help. As you saw there, it is a much bigger job than one person. Um, but we are still in process of, of addressing that. Uh, PTO does have some upcoming events. We have a Winter Literacy Fair on December 9th. That is an evening event from 6:00 to 8:00. Where students will read a book, participate in some activities, go around to various stations. And then in January, they will also be, they open their carnival. Lots of fun. Student celebrations. Um, since my last time here, we've had lots of opportunities to celebrate our students. I mentioned in our PBIS presentation, we've had two Student of the Month breakfasts. There we invite families in with their students who've been chosen as Students of the Month. These are students that teachers choose from homerooms based on a variety of things. Students being kind, students putting forth great effort and perseverance. Um, so various things. So it is really a catch-all for a lot of students to be recognized. Um, so we've had two of those, one for October and November. And the cafeteria, I think the cafeteria, they put on a fantastic sausage and cheese, hash brown breakfast for our families. It's really great. Everybody always has their leftovers and we have lots of families coming, so there rarely, a lot of leftover. And we've also been able to hold our Kids of Character Assembly for the month of October. So we bring the whole class together and celebrate two students from each homeroom for whatever character virtue that is, again, chosen by the teachers. Uh, this last month was integrity. So we recognized our students were doing the right thing, even when they were looking. And we also take that opportunity to introduce our new character virtue, which for this month is gratitude. So we do our kindergarten, first grade, small read alouds, we do video, we talk about, we think about, um, what gratitude is. So students can think about that really. Finally, I don't, I don't know if you're, the donation I talked to you about was on your.
No, it's not, because we have to have it official. So we have the next one this year.
Okay. So I'd like to acknowledge, um, our school adjustment counselors, especially Gina. Gina, I call her Rojo, so what, Janarwitz? Like, what, Janarwitz? And, um, academic interventionist, Faith Veronis. They coordinated turkey meals for, um, over 20 families in our community. So they worked with both Life Church and, um, St. Constantine and Allen Church to put together full meals, turkey stuffing, cranberry sauce, everything. Um, and we're able to donate those to almost 25 families through Park Ave. So we will also be working down for other holiday, uh, support for those, those community organizations for other holiday ventures throughout this season. So acknowledge the work, especially Gina and Faith did to make sure that they identified families, took those supplies, and kind of backed out to.
That's great. Oh, that's a great update. It's a heartwarming note to end on too. Any questions or comments from the committee? Okay, we did most of that meeting in the dark, didn't we? Wake up everyone. Any questions or comments from Ms. Polievico? Yeah, lots of great things happening at Park Ave. Yeah, great job running on Sunday too. It was, it was cold. My kids were complaining. They were so excited to get there and then they couldn't get out of there fast enough. But kudos to all of you, yeah. Great job. Great. Maybe we'll go back to the, to the, all the stuff we skipped and head down that way. So the next item on the agenda will be the superintendent's report. Um, good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Good. Um, a lot of great things are happening in the district as we saw tonight. And it truly makes my heart warm about all the work that's being done to help everyone feel like they belong. Um, I'm going to start my, um, report with a personnel update. We have hired Lauren Maha as a new ABA at Park Ave Elementary School. Olivia Bohinki, para at Park Ave Elementary School. Uh, we have hired Rachel Friedman as the special education teacher for the substantially separate ABA classroom. We're really excited about her joining us. Um, those positions are hard to find and she comes to us with a lot of experience. And, um, I think she's, she's really going to love it here. Uh, we did receive our resignation from Lindsay Morello, a Park Ave para-professional. And listed in your packet are a number of vacant positions that have been posted and reposted. And there are some interviewing, uh, interviews going on. I will keep you posted on that. Under instructional leadership update, um, I do want to let you know that we held a, a team meeting here um, with our academic coaches, our principals, our Hill consultants, our TNTP consultants, um, and our SSOS, DESI consultants and some of our central office administrators to really, um, talk about the ongoing work and efforts of our academic coaches. It's my hope that those positions stay in Webster. Um, and we talked about what's going on in the different buildings and how the academic coaches are being supported by outside consultants and the work that they're actually doing with our teachers to help improve some of the instructional strategies to improve student achievement rates. It was a great meeting. I'm really proud of the work that our academic coaches are doing. They're sending out some really strong information to our teachers on a weekly basis. They're helping people. Um, people are going to them, so things are moving in the right direction. As you heard tonight with, um, our PBIS presentations, each of the schools are going to be doing a Sense of Belonging student survey. Um, Webster Middle School's ahead of us, ahead of the other schools. But those will be done periodically throughout the year to use that data to really gauge how we're doing with our. our bucket number one. Are we creating safe learning environments, and do all kids feel safe and heard? Uh, I think, as we saw tonight, those programs that we're building, like Girls on the Run, and establishing them at an early age where students are making those connections and building those memories, those girls will never forget that program. And that's the kind of program that they're going to long for as they develop in the system. So, I think the district's, um, real, the district, um, plan that we put in place is really gonna help springboard a lot of continued growth in this district. So, there's a short update on, on some of that. Uh, in terms of management and operations, uh, we are in the budget season for FY '24. We had a meeting on November 18th as a DLT, and we are in, I would say, um, process of putting together the first draft. Principals had gone back to their teams and collected information from their, um, ILTs, from their extracurriculars, um, and we're putting together the process, having new principals. We are really kinda slowing down the process so that they understand it, so that, you know, that there's time for them to digest and understand all the components of a budget, which is really hard to do when you're new. So, we're, uh, central office staff are really trying to help our principals with that. Uh, we plan on sticking to our budget calendar, which you have, um, seen, and we'll be rolling out the first draft of the budget in January. In terms of, um, October 1st enrollment numbers, I just wanted to give you the enrollment numbers. We have seen a decline in our student enrollment. Where, uh, October 1st numbers were 1,692. We have, uh, 365 students at Bartlett, uh, 590 at Webster Middle School, and 737 at Park Ave. In terms of family and community updates, we've heard a lot about that tonight. To add to that, I want to say, and many of you know this, Webster Middle School held a really special Veterans Day, um, recognition celebration. I'm hoping that that stays as a tradition. Um, and we had parent-teacher conferences, which you've heard about. You have not heard about our LPAC meeting that was held, Dr. Mackay organized and held at Park Ave for the district last November 18th. Those LPAC meetings will happen at each of the buildings so that parents can get a feel for our buildings and not feel fearful to go into the next building if they're a Park Ave parent and moving on. So, uh, you also heard tonight that the Park Ave PTO was very successful. Um, on behalf of Ms. Peterson, they also held a, a book fair, and that was very successful as well. In terms of other updates, in your packet, um, I am on your, the CMC Board and the SWEC Board. You have the annual report from the Central Mass to take a peek at, and the SWEC, uh, first quarter report. Uh, coming down the pike will be the SWEC annual report. They're at different paces, at different collaboratives, so those things will be rolling in. And finally, I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoyment with your families and friends.
Thanks for your updates, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Oh, wait a second, I do have something else. I was going to toss it over to Dr. Mackay. It's been a, a long evening of being quiet, so, um, we have a lot of ongoing instructional supports in place. Sometimes we bring it to the school committee, and sometimes we don't, but there's a lot of movement and shaking of supporting teachers with new curriculum materials. So, I would like to toss it to Dr. Mackay to share some of our latest and greatest.
Thank you. Um, I'll start by talking about, uh, the, what it's called, direct instruction materials that the district had purchased last year. Um, and this year, we've been really, we had an opportunity to purchase it at the end of last year. This year, we've been, um, rolling out the different professional developments with, uh, specialists who have really helped our special ed team and our Title I team understand the different programs, to assess students at a baseline, to then figure out which program is appropriate for which students. The programs are designed to be direct instruction, so our tier-one programs don't, because they spiral, you know, a lesson is taught on a particular day, not to mastery. Um, when you get into the direct instruction programs, they're really taught like, this skill, followed by this skill, followed by this skill. The big takeaway for, for us in learning about that training is that, A, um, it'll help Title I and, um, special education use very specific data to understand groupings of students, where they're at with a targeted intervention that is very specific to that need, with, with built-in progress monitoring, um, so that decisions can be made about, about students. That will really help inform the processes within special education and, um, to some extent, the students that grade or need in Title I. Um, and secondly, the biggest piece was that, you know, oftentimes, we get programs, and we like this part, and we like this part, and we do this part, but not that part, and that these programs, the way that they're designed, because they are skill-based sequentially, um, and designed to have that direct, explicit instruction, that they have to be done from start to finish. They have to be done the way that they were designed, otherwise, the fidelity of the program is gone, and we don't get the results that we anticipate. Um, I have seen a lot of excitement from the special ed staff in having access to materials, and they wanna try this, and they wanna try that, so that's, that's been rolling. Um, the following, uh, following the initial training is coming back and coaching for implementation. So, that's great. On the L side, and that's really, like, I'm helping, um, Mrs. Barris with the rollout of that. With the, um, with the, um, ELL side, we have been fortunate to receive 10, um, free days because we are affiliated with SSOS from the state, the state systems of, statewide system of support. We were entitled in Webster to 10 free days of consultation and professional development from, I always, I always mix this up, the Collaborative for Educational Services out of Southampton, Southampton, Northampton, sorry. And we have been working with a consultant on the L team that has helped us curriculum map, and then, so that I've mapped, last year, we bought all these materials, this year, we mapped the material, we mapped the curriculum, and then the following, um, work will be on implementation. And, um, also helping us with some scheduling around L and, um, helping us with very specific, um, data following students for monitoring their progress, um, in, in ELL, as well as helping us better meet the needs of those students that are duly-coded. They're considered Ls with disabilities, so, um, students that are both L and they have an IEP. Um, and that, that scheduling thing that I was talking about, there's, you know, competition for time. There's, there's only so many minutes in a day, and it often gets, um, those minutes often get consumed by services, and we have to still meet the requirements to have students have access to tier-one instruction. So, it can be a little bit of a struggle, so we need, we need a little support with that. Um, and so, that is, you know, all work in the right direction to meet the needs of students, really with a focus in equity, so that all students have access to high-quality materials, that our teachers feel competent in utilizing the high-quality materials, and know how to make decisions about progress regarding our students.
Thank you, Dr. Mackay. Appreciate your updates. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Um, Dr. Gogan, I was gonna ask you a question, actually. I don't know if, yeah, um, related to, so, obviously, it's a staffing shortage across every industry. Um, how are we doing with managing faculty absences? Do we have enough subs, or how's that all working?
Every school has a building-based sub. Um, that was, we're using ESAR funds for that. Um, and there are days when it's tough. Um, so, I think that the pattern at some of the buildings is to split classrooms and share the students amongst. I think also that the use of paraprofessionals to sub is happening. Um, as we had previously shared, um, with the shortage of staff and with having certified academic interventionists, some of those people have been temporarily placed in classrooms because it's in the best interest of kids to have a certified teacher rather than a day-to-day floating sub. So, I think we're doing the best that we can, um, and certainly, um, principals would rather have all staff in the building at all times because it can be a puzzle. It can be a very difficult challenge. Um, and I know that this year, the principals are, um, actually having those conversations when they see patterns, or, you know, they're able to ask questions if they have to. Certainly, we know people get sick, um, but, um, I think people in the buildings, that are left in the buildings, do the best to cover their peers, and we're trying to get through each day.
Another good time to shout out, um, substitute teacher opportunities?
Yes.
For anyone listening?
Yes, if anyone is interested, and we've put out, put that out, they certainly need to just come to central office to fill out a query and a form, and, um, you know, we, we do do some prepping, um, for people. Uh, you know, I, I am in the superintendent's network. Uh, we're in much better shape than some districts.
I'm sure.
So, um, you know, certainly, we would love to have all of our positions filled, and we are absolutely delighted that we have found, um, a teacher who has experience to come in for, um, our substantially separate ABA classroom at Park Ave, because those are, those hard, uh, hard positions to fill, um, and we really found, um, someone just, uh, just last week.
That's amazing.
So, we're, we're acting quickly, um, but it is a challenging time.
Yeah, I'm sure. Great, well, lots of great stuff going on in the schools, so anybody listening or watching, should, um, they have time on their hands during the week?
Yeah, and college students who are coming home?
Right.
For break, um, you know, we often have a slew of college students come in, or relatives of college students come in to fill out the sub paperwork, and we put them to work during their break. It gives them a good experience as well. So, um, we will continue to do that.
Excellent, thanks. Right, let's see here. I think we're back in order. Uh, no other questions or comments for Dr. Gogan or Dr. Mackay? Um, where are we going next? Business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, thank you. The first item I have is building committee update. Um, there hasn't been another meeting since our last school committee meeting, but we did have our design, um, development submission due on November 15th. That was submitted in by our OPM to the state, so they are waiting for some feedback. Um, we will have three submissions, uh, to the state before our deadline in August, um, before we have to go out to bid. So, this was the first of three, so we're waiting for their feedback. The building committee does have another meeting scheduled for December 6th. Uh, moving on to maintenance, uh, for the most part, things have been quiet in the buildings. Uh, we do have, I know, it's, it's getting, it's getting cold, so we don't wanna...
Yeah.
We did have a controller go down, I believe, on the rooftop at the middle school, um, which heats the gymnasium, I'm pretty sure. Uh, so, we have somebody scheduled to come out and look at that. It's probably gonna be about $2,000 to replace the part on the roof to get that back up and running, um, but I have approved that work, and so we will be fixing that. Um, we've also been working on our maintenance here, um, having some stuff rebuilt on it for our generator. Um, happy to say that I've seen the van out there every week for, um, the past month with smoke coming out of our roof, but, uh, it actually worked today as, as it's supposed to. It came on, it was no black smoke, and things were running smoothly, so, um, I'm glad that work, I think, is completed and has been successful. And then, I'm also gonna throw this under maintenance, and it's really not building maintenance, but it is website maintenance. Um, as you know, we have been looking at, we have been working on updating our website. Um, we have had a little block in the road that's gonna slow us down just a little bit, so we had signed a contract with Blackboard to move forward with our new design. Um, shortly after we signed our contract, they reached out to us and said, "By the way, we just bought a different company, we're not gonna be using this company anymore, and, um, we want you to switch over to a new template, which is gonna be more money now." So, I said, "That's not okay," because we have a contract, so we went back and had some discussions with them. Um, we could stick with Blackboard, which will, could, continue on improving in two years, and then we would be without support, and we would have to go through the whole process all over, or we could go to the new templates, um, and start, start from the beginning where we were, only a few weeks in with Blackboard, and be fully supported. Um, after some negotiation back and forth, we are all set with pricing. They agreed to match the pricing that we currently had. Um, they are coming out with some new templates, so, we are starting again with that. The good thing is that we caught it early into the phase, so it's probably only pushed us back a few weeks. We're still trying to get something up, um, after the first of the year. It just might not happen after January 1st, it might be more towards the middle or end of January. But, it is a work in progress, we are moving forward with it. Michelle Budney, um, in the curriculum office, um, has been doing a bang-up job, meeting with them, and really learning the new design. Um, so, we will be moving forward with the new website. We are working on it. And then, the last item I have is an FY '23 Quarter One update. In your packet, you should have a budget. Um, we are on target. I have made the, um, transfers that we did for raises. Um, you'll see that reflected in there. On the top right, I put some little notes typically. Um, if you look at bi-weeklies, which would be your teachers, they should be averaging around 24%. If you look at weeklies, they should be about 40%, and our 39-week pays are at about 30%. So, you can tell if we're over or, uh, or under, um, which can happen in certain categories because we might've had a teacher leave, and then somebody come in, either making a higher rate of pay or a lower rate of pay. So, you'll see some, it's not uncommon to see some minor discrepancies, but it is an area that, when I see a flag, I look at it, and I say, "Oh, how come that's, that's a little off?" And then I go in and look, but we are, um, no concerns at this point. We are maintaining on our special ed tuition, um, so, we seem to be on target with that. And that concludes my report. Told you I'd be quick.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. Um, I'm excited for the website, and just going back to Ms. Blight's comments earlier about us being aware of things that are going on, I think, I'm hoping that the new website will make it easier for us to find things than to go to the district website, to an individual school website, and then click a link, you know, into a newsletter or something like that. Um, having things, you know, right on the homepage, whether it be, you know, an event going on at school or after school, or even sporting events, you know, um, sports schedules, um, that type of thing.
And, you know, when we first went with this website, it was training, but there was also training for, actually, parents and things like that. This is how you do this, you know, if you wanted to link your calendars together. So, if you had a student at multiple schools, there were ways to go in and select your calendar, so you can see it all on one calendar. I think that has gotten lost over the years, and, um, but we, we definitely need to do a better job and clean that up and make sure the information is easily, you know, if you're clicking two or three times to get something, you're done.
Yeah, no one's looking.
Nobody wants to spend that much time to look.
Yeah.
So, we are aware of that, but I think the newer designs are, um, more pleasing to look at. You know, they're more modern, they're more buttons versus scrolling way down. Um, so, the goal of any website is to go on to be able to find information quickly without having to click everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we are definitely keeping that in mind as, as we move forward through this.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Right, no other questions or comments from Mrs. Perangeli? Uh, the next item on the agenda under new business is acceptance of donations, the first one being Webster Middle School Spirit Ware from Energy North Group.
As you can see from the photo in your school committee packet, Energy North Group donated a ton of Webster Middle School clothes to the Webster Middle School, and we wanna thank them for that great donation.
I don't see one.
You don't see the picture? The picture's not in there? Well, we will send you the picture. Um, it's a table filled with sweatshirts that say Webster Middle School. Um, do you have it in your packet, Lori? Yeah, we'll pass it down.
Oh, that's amazing, yeah.
Yeah, it is amazing.
Is this gonna be used for the ROR store, or is this for something different, do you know?
Um, I'm not sure how they're using it. Um, I know that, um, I have seen some staff in some of them, so I think they might be purchasing them.
I have a feeling I have a middle-schooler who has been talking a lot about saving her Wildcat tickets or ROR tickets for, um, school swag, um, namely, a sweatshirt, so...
They're nice, it's a nice design.
Yeah, these are great. How very generous.
Yes.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the donation of Middle School, uh, Webster Middle School Spirit Ware from Energy North Group.
So moved.
Good. There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes, and thank you once again for the donation. And the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation of a drum kit to the Webster Middle School band from Diego Taborda, and there's a picture of that going around, too. Dr. Gogan?
I would just like to thank Diego for donating that drum set. I know that many students are going to benefit from being able to use that at our school, and I know our music teacher is happy about that as well.
Excellent. Yeah, well.
In Webster, kindness matters.
That's right. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this donation? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes, and again, a thank you to Diego Taborda for the generous donation of the drum set, and I think you're right, lots of middle school students are going to have a lot of fun on that drum set, and a lot of learning. And the next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. There is a request, a transfer request for the MASCE superintendent search, which was Tracy Novick that was here earlier. Mrs. Perangeli?
Sure. I am requesting to transfer $13,000 from, there is a sick leave retirement buyback line at the district office that we do not need because we were able to pay that buyback out at the end of June. We had a staff member retire early on last year, and they usually have to put in their notice, and it's required to pay back, we budget in the next fiscal year, but because of the salary savings and last year's budget, we were able to pay it out in June. So that is excess salary savings right there. So we are looking to transfer 13 from there into the other charges in the superintendent's office.
Thank you for that. So I will, is there any questions or comments from the committee about this? So I will entertain a motion to approve a transfer in the amount of $13,000 from the retirement account to the other charges account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is a transfer request from Bartlett High School Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account, and that transfers in the amount Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee? Motion to adjourn. Oh, Ms. Blythe made the motion, and Ms. Millet made the second.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.